Watchovers as we meet and we go our separate ways. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
This time I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Miller?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Jarrett, is any discussion? All in favor?
All right. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the previous meeting. Had a chance to look over those. And are there any questions, additions, amendments? If there's no dissent, then we will place that on the consent agenda for approval at the monthly meeting. Monthly financial reports. You can find the May thirty-one financials. End of month fund equity. Any questions about that document? Head to me. Monthly financial report in detail. General Fund Fiscal Year-to-Year Report. Revenues. Tracy, you want to walk us through that?
Yes, sir. We're reviewing the report through May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And if you look through the second page, you can come down and see our total revenues as of May, fifty-four million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and four dollars and thirty cent. And we're approximately eighty-five point four one percent through the fiscal year. And going through, you see the expenditures broken down by the functions. The total expenditures as of May two thousand and eighteen is forty-nine million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, and forty-six dollars and twenty-seven cent. And we're at seventy-eight percent thus far. But we do have approvals, salaries and benefits that will post July and August, that will be reflected in June. So that's why we're seeing that. That will end us with our fund balance. Fourteen million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars as of May thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen.
The next document is the comparison report. Reflects the end of month fund equity over the last four years. Any questions about this? All right. And the June twenty-one East Plus summary. Revenue, once again, is over where we were at last year this time, slightly. It's a good sign. Any questions about this document? All right. If there's no questions, comments, then we'll place the financial reports on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Out-of-state travel. And several out-of-state travel. Request here. And several of these are good ways out, coming in and submitting their requests. If there's no dissent, then we will place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. FY nineteen Family Connection Contract is up for renewal. This is an annual contract that we have to approve to continue to receive our Family Connections funding. I do have April Thomason here, the Director of Family Connections, to answer any questions. If there's any questions. It's a great program. East Plus Five Project List. Our timeline for East Plus Five, before November vote, is to have the board look at this list. Started this discussion in a retreat back in February. Following the same steps that we took with East Plus Four. Presenting this as discussion about the priority list for East Plus Five. Then we will be, after tonight's meeting, we will send this to Frank Keen, Raymond James. He'll be working with Fanel, Fanel and Savannah to prepare. Valid question. And we'll come back next month. With this list formalized as a ballot referendum, pass the board to approve. ROTC, Multi-Purpose Facility at Coffee High School. Security improvements, system-wide. Textbooks, technology upgrades, camera system, school buses, debt service. Missland is interior improvements, renovation system-wide. Missland is exterior improvements, renovation system-wide. Fan and coal equipment, reel and personal property.
Is this a time call? We have textbooks square in some years.
There are textbooks on there twice.
We took it off the E-board, but it was on there twice.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right. Ad-alternate at Coffee High School. This is the Performing Arts Center. Yeah, on the agenda on E-board prior to this meeting, we took down all. All right. We've got the Coffee Performing Arts Center. As you know, we talked last month, the month before, about the Performing Arts Center Black Box Theater. We did that originally as an ad-alternate. The ad-alternate was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We asked the contractor to go back and revise that to a minimal scope of the project to allow us to complete it enough to actually use the room upon opening. And so, the work that's described on this ad-alternate would finish out the running so that it could be used upon move-in and would have it prepared to do the other work that down the road, if the board chooses to complete, we can complete. So, the ad-alternate is for ninety-one thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. I'm recommending that we go ahead and approve this. The cost of construction seems to be going up nationwide. See the tariffs on steel and aluminum that are out there. I don't think we're going to see the cost of construction go down in the next few years. So, considering those things, I'm recommending we go ahead and do this ad-alternate to finish this piece prior to move-ins, and then students can go ahead and start using the ceiling. Sir?
Performance payment bond.
Right, yeah, that's. Tracy, you have an explanation? Performance payment bond?
I'll have to get with Jones Company and ask Jones Construction. Let the other one recover. The initial one they've done, I'll have to ask.
Counsel, would you?
I don't think that'll be on there. It's based on the, the cost is based on the amount the board approved. But, um, just, uh... And there is, you know, of course, performance bond at the bank, the contract that goes under, that's bond with sure somebody else comes up. And the payment bond pays everything. And you have to have both of them. But Tracy, was, at the first, we probably just don't know whether the first payment performance bond was based on the exact amount of the contract at that time regardless of the add-on to deduct.
I have to look and see.
That's what it'll be.
Well, I'm going to recommend we table this until we find out.
Sure. Well, it is what it is. I mean, it is, it is, uh... Is there a time matter on?
It's not time sensitive. I'd like to add that answer.
How that's calculated?
That's right. So I would draw that recommendation until we get more information. Elementary school. Security. Board members, as you know, we submitted a RFP to the local newspaper for advertisement for security services for the eight elementary schools. Given recent events nationwide, school shootings, we felt like it was prudent to go ahead and get armed officers in the schools last month of the school year in all the schools. So we did that as somewhat of a temporary solution to a long-term issue that we want to address. School systems across the state and across the country are exploring different ways of providing security in all of their buildings. Historically, we provided armed security in our middle school and high school and ninth grade and alternative school. But with the recent events, changes in society, I think everybody here is committed to having armed respondents in our buildings, in all of our buildings, to protect our boys and girls, period. So, in trying to devise a sustainable plan moving forward, we felt like putting out for proposals just to see what kind of private security services are out there that we make in contract with, just like we contract for other services. Felt like this was worth exploring. So, we received two proposals that you have given me both copies of the proposals. Our plan tonight is just to give you these proposals and let you review them and take a look at the proposals and see what you think. We'll be needing to have a called meeting sometime either July eleventh in the evening or anytime July twelfth, we could have a meeting so we could revisit this at that time. The reason for the meeting is July eleventh or July twelfth is that we're opening a bid for the high school security work July ten. So we needed to have a board meeting as soon as possible for y'all to approve the work at the high school and get that done before school starts back.
You can have this other information there too on the Performing Arts Center?
Yes, sir. We'll have that then too. We'll have that. So, uh, we would just ask the board to review this. I will say that we went to the Georgia School Board Association meeting. Of course, board members went. We sat through the policy section, which State Board, School Board, Associations, Attorney Bill Hartley talked about this very issue, school security and solutions to school security. And one of his recommendations, which is certainly would be very, you would expect it, but that we do work with our local law enforcement, our local Sheriff's Department, our local police departments, and whatever we wind up doing to make sure everybody's on the same page. So that's very important to me personally, and I know to all of us professionally and then just as a community. This is a community school system, and we want to make sure we are doing all we can do as a community to protect our, our schools, our students, our boys and girls throughout Coffee County. So, I did talk with the Sheriff's Department and the local PD as well as the city administrator and the county administrator over the past week and got feedback from them on continuing to provide services up at our schools and what our plan will be moving forward. And I told them the same thing I'm saying here tonight, that whatever we end up doing, we want it to be something that's best for our boys and girls here in Coffee County. And that right now, we're going through a process and we're trying to arrive at what is best for our boys and girls here in Coffee County and for our schools and our community. And so, this is a process that we're going through. We don't believe we would be doing our due diligence if we didn't go through a process and look at all of our options and figure out what the best plan of action will be. And a sustainable plan of action. That's important, something that we can sustain. So, this is the information I present tonight. We'll revisit it when we come back together either July eleventh in the evening or during any time, July twelfth, if y'all get together. So, any questions?
Do you, we need, I'm sorry?
You had feedback from those schools, from those schools, though?
Oh, I think there's no doubt that we're, we're going to keep. I think the feedback we've received has been very positive, very positive. The principals have been very positive about having the officers on their campuses. I've heard from numerous principals, I've heard from parents. People feel good about having officers on the campuses. I think that's school people, I think that's community members, so.
Will it be possible if we have some, we want to keep, employing how to keep them even if we go into this other contract with these folks?
You know, right now, I would be, I would be getting ahead of myself if I said yea or nay on that. I really don't know. All we've done at this point is taken the proposals from, from the two vendors, and we're going to review those proposals. We wanted to give them to you so that you would have information to be able to, if there's any questions that you would have, and give them a good review and go from there. So, when I've talked with our local law enforcement, I told them our timetable would be, hopefully by the end of July, we would have a permanent plan ready to recommend to the board.
So we need to have a proposal from the local?
Well, they're governmental agencies. Our local police department is part of the city government. Our local sheriff's department is part of the county government. City of Nichols PD is part of City of Nichols government. I would consider them governmental agencies that, that are outside of the scope of a private contractor, so.
But we can consider.
Was the, was the RFP written such a way that a governmental agency was excluded from making the proposal?
No, I wouldn't say anybody would have been excluded.
These quotes based on them getting all the schools or just?
It was based on them getting the eight elementary schools. That was what we put out there was the eight elementary schools. Our plan is to keep, and I told the sheriffs, definitely, we want to continue with our SRO program as it is. I think we've got a really good SRO program with the officers that we have in middle school, high school, ninth grade, well-staffed. I think it's, uh, it's a benefit to have that. There, there, if we need first responders, we want our sheriff's department and our police department and the two outlying communities also to be on the same page with us. I think that's very important, that, that our, our local law enforcement, our first responders all be on the same page. So I would have no intent to...
My, my thought on it is it's just having sat at the table with those folks, gene them, local law enforcement, the meetings that we've had, that they didn't put a proposal in. I don't know if it's a misunderstanding on their part that they were not interested. I mean, I would certainly think there would be a lot of interest that we do this thing as a community. I don't know, I think.
I know, had some contact with some folks down in Nichols who like to keep them where they got the wheels there. And it's made with all the proposals off these, but I think he's a tool by the City of Nichols.
Well, I would think whoever gets this contract, I mean, they're going to have to hire people to fill this thing. And if there's somebody there that's got that qualification that's already working there, I'm sure that would look like a good candidate to them, I mean, I would think, you know.
It's not guaranteed, is it?
No, it's not guaranteed. I mean, that's the private county, but my point is they're going to have to hire people to, to staff this.
They would have to have post-certified also. We require post-certified officers. Quite honestly, there is concern locally that there would be adequate post-certified officers to be able to serve that many schools. Right now, between our sheriff's department and our police department and the Nichols and Rocks and PD, they, one of the city agencies indicated they were, they were stretched pretty thin trying to cover it as it is now. So, but...
But the city's doing through school, no?
They are. The city is doing, they finished the school year with the city doing east side, west side, Indian Creek. County Sheriff's Department was covering Satilla, Ambrose, West Green. City of Nichols was covering Nichols and City of Rocks was covering Rocks. So that's how we ended the year. I told, I told those groups that were there, worst-case scenario, if we were not able to get something different than what we finished the year with, I would be comfortable starting the year with what we finished the year with, if that was a last resort. Because I, I think we're all committed to having officers in our schools.
I just, you know, I think, well, the Nichols, the local police department, if they can borrow somebody that's familiar with everything, I think would be better for kids because they, they know kids. It's just something I was looking at, I think, you know, I don't know how they base their bid on the older schools and law. I would look to us, leave a way out to retain. So it's working out good already.
Well, I would say the board really has the authority to do anything they want to do regarding all of this. You can accept one of these proposals, you can deny it, either of the proposals, do different, this is just a request for proposals. At the end of the day, we're just talking, you as the board can go whichever direction we choose to go.
I just, I, like I said, I was just surprised that we didn't, because we've been working with them and they've been at the table with us and they know which direction we're, you know.
I think there's some logistical pieces that have to be worked out with the city government and the county governments, the county government and the city governments. Some, some behind-the-scenes type of bookkeeping that they would have to know that was straight. They would have to, they're going to have to come together to be able to do that.
How are we paying, how are we paying each individual?
We're doing it more than one way. And one of the, the city PDs, or I think two of the city PDs, we're paying them as a private contractor. Each, each officer comes in and gets their check. And the City of Douglas and the county officers, we're reimbursing the city or county for their pay. And so it's running through their, their books. Those officers are just coming up here and getting a check from us. So we don't have a, we, it's not all the same right now. That would be, one of the ideas that was discussed, I think, that the city, county was brought up was the idea of a joint task force, kind of like they have the heat units made up of the city and county, law enforcement. And then the idea that was explained in this meeting, I don't know if it's viable for those groups if they could, they could form somewhat of a joint task force between different governmental agencies and have one system, one chain of command for operating that task force that would cover those eight schools. So, but that would take some negotiating, working with those city, county governments.
So, I don't know if I've watched them, but I do know they're going to keep them where they got them.
Yes, sir.
I guess, we're going to be clear if I have them in Nichols, they all know the unit.
Yes, sir.
The way of school government can't see less.
The whole idea of community policing, having officers in our buildings is a good thing because they get to see the children in a way other than sometimes historically our children see officers. And they get to interact with them in the schools, they get to see the mamas and daddies when they come to the schools, and they, they know who the mamas and daddies are. And so they're... And so there is a piece of community policing that is valuable to having the law enforcement officers.
I can't think of his name right now.
Yeah, you can eat, I mean, Ms. Peterson, another West Creek sheriff, but they've seen.
Get in there and interact and, of course, him being vulnerable, he knew you're on up anyway, so.
Her point was that the kids were seeing a positive aspect of law enforcement versus some of the negative stuff that they.
The serious nature of everything that's going on in society. At the end of the day, I think we just have to arrive at what is best for our children in Coffey County, period. We got this information, I'm not asking.
These proposals, it's not, it's not a hard bid.
Is there anything else?
It's not except one or the other, it's just, yeah, it's a.
It's information for us to make a good decision. So we will have that on the agenda for our next meeting also, as well as the ad alternate for the Black Box Theater. Golf program facility use, the Douglas Golf and Country Club reached out to me a couple of months ago. And I met with their board of directors and they explained that the research they conducted that is common for school systems to, they have still a use fee for golf teams using golf courses. So, they have sent us a fee, use schedule. In season, golfers may use the course Monday through Thursday, the range will be available for golfers who will assist in picking up, washing balls after the practice, carts are available. Coaches and opponents, coaches during play, practice tournaments during the week are free of charge and out of season. And to me, this is the biggest piece up right here. Golfers may use the course on Mondays, because we have a number of middle school and high school golfers that aren't members of the country clubs. So this will give them access to the country club course on Mondays throughout the year there on the golf team. So that, that's a worthwhile there. I wanted to present this as information that we will be beginning paying this fee annually, a cost of $7,500. And we did budget for it, we can handle it in our budget, so it's just information. How long does the actual play season? It starts November, February, March, April, May, about four months. And this is comparable to what other systems are doing with the research about us to tip to where county, Wayne County. So it's not abnormal, actually, it's abnormal, not to be paid something, so.
We've never paid.
No, ma'am. Yeah. All right, audience participation, is there anybody here for audience participation? If there's no one here for audience participation, we will move forward with executive session.
Motion to exit executive, uh, exit to executive session.
Personnel?
Make a motion to move to executive session.
Motion, second.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Please take the idea of motion to exit executive session. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. It's not even said for here.